We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on October 19th, 2021 to order at 3:00 PM. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during their hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you are unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone who would like to speak or present on a work session item? Andy? Great. That being said, we will move on to the minutes of the meeting. I believe, or no, I guess we're just going straight to the work session item. Sorry about that. With that, we'll hand it over to city manager Bradley Ford with a report from him.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, city council and to the public. We have a great agenda for you today. We have no changes, but I did want to make sure I highlighted we've got at your place is an updated copy of Resolution 2021-761 that reflects the current COVID-19 statistics. Two informal reports on your agenda today, council. The first is an update on the cultural arts facility study. This is our third amendment, as council is well aware. We had a pretty aggressive timeline on this project that got hindered by COVID-19 during 2020 and even still to this point. It's really kind of restricted our abilities for travel of our consultants and specifically related to public input, which is a very important phase of this project. We are providing this update to say what the next steps are, as well as that we anticipate completion on the project by January of 2022.
I'll just, are you done there, Bradley?
Yes, sir.
Just to comment on that, a very exciting project. It'll be interesting to see how this fits into our downtown long-range planning. It's a real exciting performing arts center deal is what we're talking about. There's so many exciting things going on in downtown Waco right now. They're kind of coming to fruition with the Catalyst Project on University Parks and the groundbreaking of the Marriott and the Pevo Var coming in and the Magnolia Network blossoming here. I think it'll be interesting to see how this fits. I know it'll be fun to watch the feasibility and the fit. May be tougher to figure out how we pay for it and how the economics work, but I'm excited to kind of open that up and see what it looks like. Exciting project. And I agree that we should give them a little bit more time to get the final look of it.
Thanks, council member. Our second informal report today, council, is IR 751, which is an update on holiday events. We'd previously scheduled this for, I think, a month ago or perhaps six weeks ago and tabled it as we started to see COVID numbers decline in our community so that we could be thoughtful about what might we be looking at in the holiday season. And given that numbers have changed so significantly for the better, you'll see that we have a comprehensive update there with a number of events planned at the zoo downtown, as well as everybody's favorite, the return of everybody's favorite, the holiday cheer fire truck. So, any questions on informal report 751?
I just want to say how much I appreciate staff's work on this in conjunction with City Center Waco. I was able to have a brief discussion with Jeffrey Vitarius at City Center Waco, who's also working diligently on behalf of the PID to ensure that downtown Waco, in the PID district specifically, and downtown Waco really has a great masterful holiday decoration plan in place. And I think you're going to see some really, I think the community is going to see some really great additions this year through this partnership between the city and City Center Waco. I think this is a great way to celebrate the holiday season. I think that it is, you know, it's been such a challenging year and a half, and so the ability for our community to find some joy through some events like this, I think, is really exciting. I think it's also a great way to showcase our downtown. A lot of this activity is happening in the core of our city. It's a way to support merchants and honor the great amenities that exist in our downtown community. And I do want to give a special highlight to the wild lights at Cameron Park Zoo. I think that's a really creative thing, Bradley, and I just want to commend you and your staff for doing that. We've, my family and I have gone on the Trail of Lights in Austin and thought, man, that is such a neat thing that that community does, and this is going to be kind of our own version of that. But even more cool, because there's going to be zoo animals there, so. So, just commend you for this cool work that's being done to really bring some joy into the hearts of our community, particularly in what's been, at times, felt like a grueling year and a half.
Pardon my following you, Mayor. I really want to thank our Parks and Rec staff and Jonathan Cook and City Center Waco just because of all the work they've always done. And the ability to shift in last year and still bring holiday cheer and still bring a festive environment for our community was absolutely commendable. And, you know, I am super excited about the continued efforts, the expansive efforts of our community. And lest we not forget, we've got a new plaza. So, there's a great opportunity to fully cover our PID district even more with our holiday celebrations. So, I'm super excited to see what that will be in the future. I think it's great. I think that families are looking forward to this time. The storytime that you all did on the community channel, I mean, all of that was so needed and such an opportunity to really showcase what we have in spite of. And so now that, you know, we are at a period where our numbers are, where we feel comfortable enough to bring people back in, I think that this, just the new events, you know, and utilizing, you know, some of our amazing assets is just spot on. So, congratulations on your forward thinking and insight.
And this home, sir, just following both of those words of wisdom there, there's so much going on in our budget right now, you know, half a billion dollar budget and 100 million dollar projects and infrastructure and roads. But this holiday thing is important to us, and I'm excited that we're kind of moving to expanding that a little bit, more lights, making it part of a community celebration. And almost more importantly, the ripple effect that comes out of that, of drawing people to downtown, having them spending money supporting micro businesses that are struggling to survive right now. So, I think it's all the more important to get a really nice lighting and everything people want to see is on pages 12 and 13, all of the things that we're going to try to get done here in the next couple of months for the holiday season. So, yeah, I applaud staff pulling this together.
And one of the best ways that we can all ensure that we get to have this wealth of exciting events in downtown Waco is by continuing to wear our masks and getting vaccinated. If you have a faith community or a workplace or business or a club, our Public Health District would love to come do a vaccination clinic there. Also, Mayor Meek, I have seen photos of former Mayor Dever run the Wonderland Run previously, so hope to see you crossing that finish line.
Pressure.
Yeah.
No pressure, sir.
... yesterday. Another thought I had is just, as we always say, you know, I think strategic communication of these great events matters. So, let's be thoughtful about how we get the word out. I mean, I just think, you know, some of the stuff on this list, it's so cool. I definitely want to make sure that our community members know about it, and I know that our communications team is on it and does a great job there. And then another thing that I would encourage us to do is partner, you know, with City Center Waco or some of our other partners on challenging private businesses in this area where we're kind of doing a focus to potentially do some work themselves. We've thrown out ideas in the past of doing like a contest potentially for, you know, downtown businesses to decorate their windows or their business scape. And I think that City Center, don't quote me on this, I think they're trying to determine if they have maybe a grant opportunity for people to have some grant dollars for that purpose as well and do a contest and just kind of make it a fun event for some of our downtown merchants, too. So, let's see if we can see, gel that, those like high-level ideas a little bit and get it over the finish line, but really thankful for this.
Good stuff.
Just to join my voice to the holiday chorus here, I want to say that decidedly our council and city management is behind not canceling Christmas this year. I'm glad to see that.
No crunches allowed. All right. We do have four public hearings on the agenda today. Clint Peters, our director of development services, will cover those here in a few minutes in the work session. And then resolutions-wise with 22, and I'm going to highlight just a few of them, the first of which is Resolution 765, which approves a professional service contract with MGT of America Consulting to perform a disparity study for a total project amount not to exceed This study is a big piece of the council's strategic goal of creating equity in all that we do. In fact, I kind of consider it a cornerstone, and as I'm sure you all do. The study will consider if and how the city could move from a race or gender-neutral approach to government contracting to a more intentional contracting policy, which of course would be in line with U.S. Supreme Court decisions that are referred to in the packet, because there's got to be a compelling government interest behind those policies. So, MGT actually recently completed a disparity study for the city of Dallas in 2020, and it has a number of clients all across America that they do this work for. Staff anticipates it will take about 16 months to complete this study. The second...
Just on that, really quick, Bradley, I just think, thank you, staff, for getting us to this point and to my council members for raising this as a priority. What I love about this study is that we've always looked at all issues at the city utilizing data. We've always looked at equity utilizing data and seeing the disparities that exist in data. And so I look forward to, I think this is, there's good fruit that will come from this, but to really understand the situation and have the data that backs that up is going to really highlight where we go with this. And so I think that this is a real strategic, smart approach to addressing this important issue in our community.
And this, home, sir, Mayor, if you will, I'll echo that sentiment. And I think it's exciting that we're doing this at a time when we are also accessing the ARP funds for which we've earmarked, I think, before we talk about it here in a minute, some micro business and small business funding in a revolving fund. So, I think a lot of this kind of will fit together over the coming years as we identify small businesses in Waco and MWVEs and support their efforts in building a business in Waco.
Thank you, council members. The second resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 766, which approves a settlement agreement with the parties for the TK Ranch and the TK Cemetery Association to resolve their concerns related to the city's permit application for us to build a landfill and operate a landfill next door. This settlement is a pretty significant achievement, honestly, and I wanted to particularly highlight the efforts of staff. Assistant city manager Kane, for sure, who served to directly correspond with the cemetery team. The agreement comes with other staff members that have helped as well and Solid Waste and City Attorney's Office. And I wanted to highlight it because we've continuously sought to be thoughtful to address the concerns of cemetery as well as other property owners in the area and really work with them to alleviate the concerns they have as we move forward to permit and construct a landfill.
Yeah, I think that this embodies our commitment to being good neighbors, and I'm thankful that we are able to come to the table with folks like this and work towards common solutions and find win-wins in the midst of building out what is a critical component to this region's future, which is a regional landfill.
Well said. Resolution 770 is the next highlighted item. It's a resolution that would allow the city to submit a grant to FEMA under the Hazard Mitigation Program, which, if awarded, would help with the purchase and installation of generators at some of our warming and cooling centers, potentially at community centers, as well as potentially at one of our water treatment facilities. As you'll recall, backup power at each one of these locations was highlighted as a needed initiative in our after-action report from the winter storm. And last, Resolution 774 and 775 are companion items that deal with our 2021 Mill and Overlay work. This is actually Phase 3. 774 approves an amendment to the contract with Casberg, Patrick &amp; Associates for Engineering and Professional Services, increases their contract amount by a little over $186,000. And Resolution 775 awards a contract to the Texas Materials Group for the Phase 3 work in an amount not to exceed $3.169 million. The contract includes both the base bid and an alternate bid, number one, and highlighting it simply to say we continue to strive to deliver a very robust city infrastructure improvement program thanks to the council's funding, particularly as it relates to street network.
Bradley, I'd also like to highlight Resolution 767, which gives an overview of the neighborhood grant program and just say a huge thanks to Mallette and Rolando and all the great work they're doing. In our agenda review earlier, I asked for a future work session to be done on the neighborhood grant program so we can, we as a community can see just the incredible impact that this grant is having block by block in some of our neighborhoods. So, Mallette, thanks for all of your hard work and to all of our neighborhood associations that came out and thoughtfully put together proposals. We're really excited for your leadership and to see the outcomes of this grant.
Thanks, council member. And Mallette, for your information, that'll be in November at some point.
Thanks for your work, Mallette. Well said. All right. Two ordinances on the agenda today, and they're both second readings. If there's no further questions, that concludes my report, Mayor. Back at you.
Thank you.
The consent agenda will consist of items, Resolutions 2021-761 through 2021-782. Are there any items the council would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, then the consent agenda will consist of Resolutions 2021-761 through 782. The next item on the agenda is work session item 2021-752 through 2021-755. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Sure. First up, we've got Clint Peters on 752, discussion of planning public hearing agenda items. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor, city council. We do have four public hearings at this meeting. The first one is dealing with our subdivision plat. It's the preliminary Platte of the Liberty Oaks addition, which is a single-family residential subdivision on China Spring Highway at Washington Lane, just east of the Waco Regional Airport. It's a 17-acre tract that's going to be developed for 47 lots, ranging in size from 8,700 square feet to just shy of 16,000 square feet. Improvements include some work to Washington Lane, which is a substandard street they'll need to upgrade to meet standards, some detention ponds, and then sidewalk as well. And also, just a note, this will be the first subdivision that will be subject to the full impact fees that were adopted by city council earlier this year.
Clint, just looking at the map there, in terms of the boundary, it is just inside the city limits. Is that right?
Yes, sir. It's just inside. You can see that blue line here is the city limit line. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of that preliminary plat. The next public hearing, 758, is a property located at 4209 South Third Street. This is for short-term rental type 1 and R1A zoning. This is a 1.1-acre, single-family lot in Council District 1 along University Parks near South Route 340. Just a reminder, the short-term rental 1 is what's still allowed in our residential zoning and is an owner-occupied property where the owner is present at times, the guests are present as well. This property is a single-family home. It does have a garage apartment that they'd like to rent out, and you can see there, it's in a mixed-use area. There's some large residential lots and then a mix of commercial industrial uses right there before you get to the Loop 340. Single-family zoning. You can see the site plan, it does have a long driveway back to the garage apartment, and you see the house there. And then here's a picture of it. There are some, the driveway will have to be upgraded to meet standards, so they will have to do some improvements for that before they can get their license. And then also, you can see the garage apartment in the back because it had some stairs to it. There's some life safety requirements left to meet for the railings on that, that they've already have been, gone through their inspection process and got those completed. We did mail out six notices on this and had zero returned, and Plan Commission did recommend approval of this. The next public hearing is to consider a land use designation change from urban residential to mixed-use flex and rezoning from R1B to O3 on property located at 724 North 19th Street. This is in the Sanger Heights neighborhood at the corner of 19th and Morrow, just north of Waco Drive. This is actually the Morrow House, if you're familiar with that, that was renovated about five years ago for the purpose of being a short-term rental. You can see on the land use map here, there is some mixed-use flex across 19th Street when you get closer to 18th and Waco Drive, and then residential as you get further back into the neighborhood. And then zoning, you can see there's a mix of zoning, especially at the intersection, you have two O3 properties that they're requesting, and then directly across is a R3E, which is a high-density multifamily district. Here's the house. This is the Morrow House, which is a short-term rental that's been in operation for almost five years. It was on the verge of being torn down and renovated for the purpose of being a short-term rental, so the owner would like to rezone it just to make sure that, moving forward, that it can be used as either a short-term rental or a light commercial office use similar to what's around it. O3 does allow short-term rentals by right, also allows office uses and then limited commercial that have hours of operation limitations from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And you can see on the other corners, so here's the Morrow House here, 19th Street. Directly across is a hair salon business, and then catty corner is an office. This is across 19th and Morrow, and then directly across the other corner is an apartment complex. So, in this case, the zoning does make sense to change to be consistent with the other three corners on that block. We did mail out 26 notices. We had two returned in opposition that did not, less than 10% of the property within 200 feet, so it did not trigger supermajority, and Plan Commission did recommend approval of the change by vote of 10 to 0. And then our last case is the final PUD plan for property located at 4300 South Jack Colgan Pressway. This is at the southeast corner of I-35 and New Road. This is for the landmark truck wash that the council approved the concept plan back in August, and so this is for the final PUD plan for the truck wash. This is on Seven Acres, just south of Equipment Depot. This is New Road, I-35. So, the concept plan was approved with some conditions, mainly dealing with mitigating some concerns, traffic concerns, noise, and then light concerns with this particular use, especially, you know, we have the school here, University High, and some apartments there. So, they did work through to modify their plans to address those issues. I'm going to go through those. So, first, here's the site. Here is the truck wash facility here. I-35 is down here at the bottom, and then New Road is here on the left side of the screen. One of the things they're going to do, they're going to build a four-foot-high berm with landscaping on that to create a buffer between the truck wash and the adjacent apartment complex. So, you'll have the landscaping at the apartments, a fenced area, an area for roadway, and then this berm. So, it's about 250 feet distance-wise between the truck wash and the apartments. Also, all the truck washing operation will be inside the building. There are no outside washing, and they do not have any vacuum facilities, which in a car wash is usually what makes, you know, the bulk of the noise for a car wash facility. The other thing they've been working on is their traffic plan. This shows how trucks will enter the site from, trucks coming northbound, they'll exit off the frontage road and come in here. You can see how they circulate through the site and then back out. Trucks coming southbound on I-35 will exit New Road, turn on New Road, and then come in on New Road, but this will be an entrance only and will not be available for exits. And then they'll circulate through the site and then exit back out on the frontage road. So, all the exit movements happen back to the frontage road with the entries coming here and here. Also, they did a traffic study that was reviewed by both Techstat and our traffic department. They're anticipating about 100 trucks a day that come through the facility, and the peak of that is in the middle of the day, which does not conflict with the peaks for the adjacent school. So, there was concern about that, but they have worked through that through the traffic study. They're also going to limit their hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then when they're closed, they'll have gates at the entry points here where trucks cannot get on the site and queue. There was concern about, you know, a truck getting there before they open and sitting back there idling and making a lot of noise. They'll have the facility completely closed where trucks will not be able to access the site.
Clint?
Mm-hmm. So, you said the traffic study did not indicate that there would be an issue with the school traffic, but if they opened at 6:00 a.m., how is that possible?
Well, so they open at 6:00, but the other facilities they have, they, and it's in the packet, they anticipate the bulk of their business coming in midday, and so the traffic that would come into the site early in the morning would not be at a rate that would cause issue.
Any different than what's on New Road?
Right. That's right. And then with the traffic flow taking everything back out to the frontage road, that helps keep that traffic off New Road. Lighting, this is a little bit hard to see, but they did provide a lighting plan with all their lighting, dark-skY friendly, that will shine down towards the property and will not leave the site. And you can see those little bubbles there is where their light is shining. And then here's some of the elevations for the truck wash, and they have a signage out on I-35. It's actually existing poles that they'll take advantage of. And then here's the site, which will be developed. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this based on the findings required by the ordinance for final PUD plan is consistent with the concept plan and all the conditions of the concept plan and the requirements of the PUD ordinance. And then we have some of our standard conditions in there, dealing with plan review. The property does have to be platted, and there is the need for some off-site sewer extension and easement dedication that will occur at plating, and then memorializing some of the things we just talked about with a condition about the time limit and then for the exits to be installed and closed when they're not open. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Clint. Any questions for staff? Appreciate it, Clint.
All right, Mayor and council, our second work session will be work session 753, which is a discussion of a report on collections of delinquent accounts. This is an annual presentation that we see here at the council meeting, and it's made by Robert Myers, as well as Frederick Bostic, who each represent law firms that we contract with to collect on accounts here at the city. And so I'm pleased... And so I'm pleased to welcome Robert Myers and Frederick Bostic for this presentation. Gentlemen?
I guess.
Thank you. And as we have said for a number of years, we consider this a real privilege to serve the city and we mean that wholeheartedly. We're residents of the city and we realize we collect taxes, delinquent taxes, not only of your constituencies and neighbors, but as well of our neighbors. And we take that very seriously. We try to do that in a way to maximize the collections, but at the same time to do it in a way that realizes that people, most of the time, the vast majority of the time, the failure to pay taxes is not the result of people's unwillingness, but rather their incapacities for various reasons. And so we are structured to work with them and we endeavor to do that and we endeavor to do that on y'all's behalf in a way that we hope is done in a way that reflects what, the way you would have it done. That said, the report we have today is, I think, a very good report in so much. If we can look at the first slide of current tax collections, it shows that for 2020, you've collected 98.92% of your taxes. In times of COVID, as we are all way too aware, that has affected the economy, but it also shows a resiliency in the local economy. Because while we would like to take credit for all of the great collection percentages, the reality is that the economy is a driving force in what we're able to collect year to year. And I think the 98.92% reflects an economic resiliency in this community even amidst the COVID.
If I may, Rick, just point out to the council, when we met by Zoom last year at this time, we were looking at the 2019 numbers and we were very, when, when the end of the year wrapped up, again, taxes start in October of the year and end next September of the year. So 2019 started in October of 19, ended in September of 20. We were very surprised to see that you had a 98.78% collection rate because we really didn't know by March of last year what was going to happen for property tax collections. And I know as we concluded our, our message to the council, visit with the council last year, we asked, what does it look like for this coming year? And we thought it was a very cloudy crystal ball. But as you can see, the 2020, as Rick was just saying, again, that starts in October of 2020 and then in September of this year, it really brought you back to basically pre-pandemic numbers. Going back to what Rick was saying, it's, it's a strong indication of resiliency of the local Waco economy and your taxpayers' ability and willingness to pay their taxes.
If we can go to the next slide, which reflects total annual tax collections, really this is a slide just to illustrate the stability of this as a revenue basis for the city. And if you look year to year, you collect 100 to 99% in terms of total annual tax collections reflecting penalties and interest. So it is a dependable year to year source of revenue. And consistent with the prior slide, you'll see that it's actually up and above 100% for 2020. If we can go to the next slide, which is collection of tax levy, this is really to illustrate the taxes are turned over to us and we begin collection of taxes earnestly because, and I was talking to Mr. Holmes earlier, the sooner you get at it, the higher percentage you collect. And we endeavor to do that. But as you will see through the years, through the various efforts made to collect taxes, ultimately the percent, total percentage increases to near 100% over five years. And so again, it's reflective of the stability as a revenue source. If there are, otherwise, I'm gonna turn this over, the remainder, to Robert. If there's any questions about any of these reports, I'd be happy to field them to the extent that I can.
The, the following chart is, consists of three pie charts. And these three pie charts reflect the taxes that you actually referred to us. Each July, you turn over to us the unpaid taxes from the prior year. The pie chart at the top is the taxes that you turned over to us in July of 2021. To date, we collected over 40% of the taxes in just a short period of time that you turned over to us just a few months ago. Over $730,000 in base tax has been collected in just a few, a few months period of time as, and which in the pie charts to the left, 2019, these show the taxes that you turned over to us a year ago and we collected over 75%. And then in 2018, those are the ones you turned over to us in 2019 and over 84%. As you can see, the longer that we have to work on the taxes in a relatively short period of time, relatively months period of time, we're able to recover for the city a, a, most of the taxes that are outstanding, as Rick was just saying in the last chart, nearly close to 100%, 99.77% of your taxes are collected. That portion is not collected or reflected in those multicolor wedges up there, every decreasing portion of the pies as the rest of the dollars are collected. And to, to give you an idea of actually how we go about collecting those taxes, we do send out notices to your taxpayers on a repeated basis throughout the year. We invite those taxpayers to contact us, as Rick was saying. In most instances, people who owe delinquent taxes don't owe them because there's unwillingness to pay or oneriness to pay. Is there some, there's something affecting the, the family, the nature of the person, the business, whatever it is? And we invite those folks to contact our office in Waco. We have diverse workforce in our office. We're bilingual and we visit with them. Because of COVID, we used to have a routine of people coming in and out of our office and sit and visiting with us. We've, we use some distancing measures to, to still be able to communicate with folks. They still come to our office. They still actually many of them visit on a regular basis to give us an update on what they're doing, to call and contact us. And we sit down with them and sort of try to penetrate what's causing the, the problem with paying the taxes and work out with them what those problems are, how we can fit within their budget, the necessity of the city to have the taxes that, that they levy. At the same time, it works within their budget to make sure they're able to pay it in a meaningful way, assist them to get that job done. And, and by sending out notices, making phone calls and routinely visiting with us, we're highly successful in getting them to pay their taxes through that mechanism. We do file lawsuits. Last year, we filed over 200 lawsuits to collect taxes. As, as wonderful as the city of Waco is and becoming more wonderful every day, there are in fact tracks of property in the city of Waco that are not as meaning, not as wonderful as we all would want them to be. And really, to a great extent, a lot of the suits that we file are suits against what we call vacant and abandoned properties, properties that the owners have passed on, fallen into disrepair. We work very closely with code enforcement at the city of Waco to pinpoint those properties and move on those properties. Many times, I'm not gonna get two lawyers here, though I know there's few in the room, we can put title back together again to properties that actually would have difficulty getting title put back together again through a tax foreclosure process and get the taxes, the properties conveyed to a person or entity that can put them to good use within the city. And we work hand in hand with the city staff to, to find those properties and, and at the same time, recover many municipal liens that we also assist the city. Even those lawsuits that we do file for collection purposes, as you can see, we filed 200 lawsuits, recovered just 81 judgments. That's because we worked through those, those lawsuits with getting people to pay their taxes on a, they can't pay it on a regular, on a one lump sum. We work with them on a, on a regular monthly basis and are successful in doing that. And we did conduct tax sales on 66 properties in the last year. And again, most of those properties that go to sale are those properties that are in derelict shape and we start the process all over again with making them useful, useful for the citizens. We also assist the city in other collections, municipal lien collections I just mentioned, where the city imposes those liens for mowing demolition. We pinpoint those properties and assist them in doing that. We also work in other municipal debt collections. We try to be one stop shop for the city staff. If they've got a debt collection process, just give us a call. We probably can help them get that done. We file claims on all the property cases for the city, whether taxes or other accounts due to the city. And we also assisted municipal court in collection of fines and fees. We had over 4,800 cases referred to us in the last year and through either the cases being recalled by the court or paid or paid out, resolved 3,700 of those for $1.3 million in outstanding fines and fees for the city. So we appreciate very much the opportunity to represent the city. We assist you in all your types of, of accounts receivable and property taxes and again, provide an opportunity, a resource for the city staff to call in case they have any questions about any, anything that we can be assisted with in, in collections as well as any property tax matters as well. Thank you for having us.
This is Holmes. I'll just lead off by saying thanks, Rick and Robert. Great, great presentation. But before I talk about that, I want to thank the 98.92% of the taxpayers that paid their taxes on time. I think they deserve a round of applause here. But the work that you did, that you do on these ones that are slightly delinquent, I think, getting up to speed, doing the basic blocking and tackling. And I was in the investment business and just knowing what you have and getting familiar with the clientele and what their problems are, a lot of them hit a rough patch and you guys are thoughtful about working out their situations one by one. And just the numbers that I'm looking at here on page 32, where within 90 days, 44% are already converted to cash, which is amazing. And then another 20% on top of that is in a workout situation or a payout situation. So having that 65 plus percent immediately getting to a pay situation, I think it just reflects the great work that you guys do. So thanks to you, Rick and Robert, and your firms for, for helping us out here.
Yeah, echoing Councilmember Holmes, I really appreciate this presentation you all offered us and these charts are really helpful to make sense of all of this and your recovery rate is incredibly impressive. I'm curious about the library collections on page 34 of the packet. Do you have an idea of what the total dollar amount is for our library collections and/or what our total average cost of collections are?
In the last year, very few library collections have been referred to us. In years gone by, we've had substantial, I can get you the numbers, give you a history of what has been turned over to us. But the last, last year, there has been not as much turned over to us as we normally have gotten in the past.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would love to see that data if that's available.
We'd be glad to get that information to you. I'll, I'll do that right away.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember, I think part of this came over to me a few minutes ago on, specifically on library, perhaps we need a, a future informal report to answer that question, but also talk about why. We had some procedural changes at the library that allowed people to read away their fines, particularly children, and I think maybe it'd be beneficial for the public to see our approach there. Thank you for raising the question.
Yeah, thank you both so much for this informative presentation. It's been a pleasure working with you all at times in private practice as well or through our clinics. And wanted to ask on municipal court, it looks like the court has referred 4,800, like you said, cases to you. It looks like with paid out or payout, those are ones where you've come to an agreement. What are the recalled cases? How does that function?
Those are cases where the court has determined to cancel the violation, either through a workout or some direct communication between the court and the violator. We, in municipal court collections, we much, in property tax collections, we represent the city as attorneys. In municipal court collections, it is a collection function solely. And so we don't, we're not the prosecutor and we just assist the court in reaching out to your violators and getting them to either contact us, make payments, or contact the court if there's some issue with dealing with your actual violation. And many times, the court in getting with the violator resolves it without, without payment.
So that's where the, it's been referred, but the court has kind of retains the authority to kind of pull it out of collection status and resolve it on its own?
Absolutely. He's the judge.
That's right. Thanks so much.
We usually find it best to follow what the judge tells us.
That's right.
Thank you for this presentation. All I would add is for the note for homes that are kind of in derelict condition and is that what, did you note that, Robert? Did I hear that right?
Yes, that's correct.
I think that that's something that we could probably bear in mind as a part of the housing work that we're doing in our housing study. You know, I think a lot of things we've talked about is title work and derelict properties and things like that. So if this is a component of that, it's probably prudent for our city staff to bear that in mind as we kind of go forward with some of the housing work that we want to do in the future. So we might, it might be good for us to catch your team up to speed on, on some of the work that we're doing in our housing study.
You know, not to delay our presentation, but or get too far into the weeds, but under state law, if you're a senior, 65 years of age or older or disabled or a veteran, you can defer collection of taxes on your resident homestead. And actually, some of our largest accounts on the delinquent roll are those folks. We monitor those. And many times, unfortunately, those are in, people who are need, many needs, but many things. And when those deferral periods end, of course, it's usually they end. And those houses are on many times disrepair. It's sort of a cycle we see where they go from the deferral period to the dilapidated house to a vacant lot.
Which I think all of that probably can incorporate into the housing work that we're seeking to do. It's great. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great to see you guys.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, I think that we're gonna take a 10 minute break now before our next council presentation unless y'all want to keep moving. That's what we discussed, is that or Man United discussed anyway. What do y'all think? Take a 10 minute break? Gonna keep going?
Do we need one?
I guess we'll keep going then.
Keep rolling. Let's roll. All right, next up, we've got Work Session 754, which is a discussion of the Waco Regional Airport Terminal Building Modernization Project. And council's seen updates on this in the past and I think you'll, you'll see a even more enlightening update today from the team. We're joined by Hoel Martinez, our Director of Aviation here at the city of Waco, as well as Fiona Bond, Executive Director of Creative Waco, and Amanda Dyer, Director of Public Art and Development at Creative Waco. And looking forward to the council seeing updated drawings, updated budgets and schedules. And Hoel, take us away.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Bradley still graciously introduced us, my name is Hoel Martinez, Director of Aviation. I have, of course, with me Fiona Bond, Executive Director, Creative Waco, and Amanda Dyer as well to speak into this art project, our art process as we go. So as we go through this, obviously you will see updated renderings of the building and you can kind of see some of the input that we've had. We've had a previous renderings provided to City Council in May. And so we took some of those comments, incorporated that, and we've taken some other feedback and you'll see that as well. And as well as an updated budget, City Council has also taken action on approving certain work orders to increase the scope of work. And so we'll also include some of that for discussion. And then I will then turn it over to the discussion of how we're going to develop the public art for the terminal building. And then we'll finish out with a updated schedule. So to kind of recap what, how this funding came about, you know, the airport was awarded in June about a little over $15 million from the CARES Act funding. And that was to drive infrastructure improvements for transportation needs and things of that nature. Out of that, we identified several projects. The terminal building rehab, we felt was important, an opportunity for us to improve our gateway to our community. And so we awarded a contract for design to KCal in November. In March, we added some additional comments where we invited Creative Waco to kind of help us roll in kind of the cultural impact of Waco. As people come in, it was kind of a sterile process up to that point, very institutional. And so we wanted to kind of be reflective of our community. And then in May of 2020, we presented some of those. we presented some of those ideas to City Council and some of those features we're adding in. So our estimated budget, here, you can see previously, we had provided some budget numbers. This was done in May. The previously proposed budget was presented in May. Again, we have added scopes of work to some of this. And in doing so, those numbers have also increased. We've identified certain, certain things that were eligible for CARES funding and other things that were not eligible for CARES funding. And we have identified what those funding, I guess where those funding pots will come from also there, as you can see on the right side of that screen. So some of the rendering, I guess the next few slides are going to be just direct renderings of the space that we're talking about. We did clean up the floor lines. As you can see, the LED lighting that's above that is going to be reflective of a pattern that's on the floor. We talked about, you know, kind of cleaning that up, really making that space open. I think the initial floor plan had a grid-like pattern on the floor. So this really cleans that space up, makes it nice and bright, clean, open spaces for passengers to experience. And this is the entry to our portal, or the screening portal here that you can see there. Again, that really gives us a modern feature with a large frame, a natural wood entryway. We removed that kind of bulky storefront that we currently have there. And then, of course, we roll this through the departure lounge as well. And so some of the comments that we had taken back, again, were lighting, flooring, and then some of the carpeting in this previous discussion that changed to where we are today. And you can see a lot of the millwork there. Some of the features we'll talk about later on. But again, that does show up on these renderings as well. And then the baggage claim area, again, we continue on with those natural wood patterns as we move through that. And then you can see where we've identified that LED canopy. Again, this is, initially, we had determined that this was an art piece, but we figured it would just be a nice feature to add warmth and bring in color to the terminal building. And so that's where we added this piece as well. And then one of the, I guess, latest developments that we talked about is the beverage, the food and beverage area. You know, we had talked about maintaining that space. Again, this is a, we're going to white, I guess what they call white box improvement to this space, and we will move this process along. It really cleans this up. They provided us renderings. For those of you that have seen our little restaurant space, we used to call that the Aerodrome Cafe. So it was much like that old Aerodrome feel, but we have really, the architects have really modernized this space, really added features that are going to make this attractive, not only in bringing in a food vendor, but also in just attracting clientele into purchasing there from the airport as a whole. This is another view of that dining room area. You can see kind of the wood features again. They added kind of a live wall there on the right-hand side, which has, it's like mesquite wood to kind of block a very unappealing view as of right now. And then you can also see that feature underneath the bar as it shows going into the main corridor there. And this is looking back now towards the screening portal there as well. And so through this process, we've identified several art locations throughout the building. And we will, as we move through the rest of this presentation, I will share this over with Fiona and Amanda.
Thank you so much, Hoel. Thank you, Mayor Meek, City Council, City Management, and Airport Advisory Board member who are on today, too. We're really excited by the possibility of outstanding public art becoming a defining feature of the newly refurbished airport. And in our part of this presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about the background to how we came to be involved and our perspective, goals and criteria for this component of the airport, modernization process, what we are offering as the recommended process for commissioning artwork in the airport, proposals of the various different stakeholders, and then a timeline for the artistic component. So Creative Waco was invited to participate in conversations around the airport modernization project. Oh, and I should say, so as we go through this, we use various pieces of artwork in this presentation, and it's a combination of artwork that is already in our community that we've played a role in commissioning and what we hope are inspirational images of public art in other airports. We think you'll be able to tell the difference between those two. And this one actually is in Chicago, the one that's in this slide. So we were invited to participate in some of these conversations with a lens of how to incorporate the character and personality of Waco into some of the features, particularly the artistic features in the modernized airport, and to propose a pathway for commissioning several unique placemaking artworks that will really say Waco. The goals for this particular component, those conversations coalesced around a number of project goals that have become the bedrock of what we're presenting today. And so our goal is to facilitate a process that's going to deliver quality public art with a wow factor that the City of Waco stakeholders and community members can be proud of, and also a robust process for commissioning public art that can then be rolled on into other public art processes that are identified in the public art strategic planning process that we're about to embark on as well. So I'm going to hand off to Amanda to talk more specifically about this.
Hello. Regarding the airport public art project goals, the overarching goals for all of the pieces, we are, have goals of placing new high-quality public art that complements the current renovation of the airport, that grow Waco's reputation and brand as a community that values and supports creativity in the arts. We all know that, but we want to make sure everyone else does, too. We want to introduce artistic and design elements that highlight Waco's distinct culture, diverse community, natural beauty and attractions, create a gateway to Waco that is impressive, distinctive, and welcoming, and then wherever possible, engage local or regional artists for career-enhancing opportunities. So the criteria that we're recommending be considered for the public art in the airport are the size, weight, and installation requirements that will come directly from the architect, safety considerations for each piece, because this is obviously a public space, and then durability and maintenance, which go hand in hand. And we want to make sure that these artworks are in line with the intended lifespan of the renovations that are going on. So when Creative Waco was asked to take part in this process, we worked to develop the recommendations for how the public art will be commissioned and installed throughout the process. So we're working to follow best practice and allow for input from all stakeholders. There will be an RFP process that will be used to seek out proposals from artists or teams. There will be established technical and artistic criteria, and those will be used for the review of proposals and making sure that the proposals meet the elements that are in the RFP. We're recommending a prioritization of local artists, and the, any recommendations for specific pieces in, to be installed in the airport would be brought to City Council for final approval before any commissioning moves forward. As part of this recommended process, we're proposing a technical panel that will vet each proposal for compliance with the technical criteria that is spelled out in the RFP, as well as for safety and for the technical ability of the artist or the team to execute the project. And representation from the City of Waco, from engineering, from airport, from architects, and from Creative Waco will be included on this technical panel. We're also recommending an artistic panel that will evaluate submissions based on artistic merit. And this panel would include representation from the City of Waco and Creative Waco, at least two professionals from the fields of art, design, and/or technology, with the intention that one of those professionals would come from outside of our community, and one appointee from both the Aviation Advisory Board and the Waco Convention and Visitors Bureau. So I'm going to explain the pieces that are included in this portfolio. The first is a ceiling-mounted sculpture in the main concourse. And you will see on this slide and in subsequent slides for the rest of the pieces that I'm going to explain, the proposed artwork location, located on the right of the slides, outlined in blue. And then you can see the footprint of the building at the bottom of the slide with the location also encircled with a blue line. So the goals for this particular piece are to feature the changing natural light at the installation site with possibly incorporating glass or light elements, and an instant wow factor in the airport's largest and tallest space. So this would be a large, grand piece that people can see. And this particular piece has a budget of $90,000, and the area that would be covered is 60 feet by 34 feet. And you can see here on this slide, two example artworks of pieces that are similar to what could be put into this particular space. And one of those examples is from a local artist, Bryant Stanton. The next piece is a life-size mammoth wall relief, which could be bough relief, it could be cut steel. It is important to understand that this piece is not intended as simply a two-dimensional mural, but it's more of a three-dimensional piece that would be mounted vertically. The goals of this artwork is to showcase the significance of the Waco Mammoth National Monument, the location of the nation's first and only recorded evidence of a nursery herd, excuse me, of Ice Age Colombian mammoths. This piece, the budget is $75,000, and the dimensions are, of the space, are 25 feet 3 inches wide by 16 feet 4 inches high. And you can see here some examples of what this type of artwork could look like, but it, we are very interested in seeing potential projects with lots of options for media. The next piece is a welcome walkway that connects the arrival lounge and the main concourse, with the goals of showcasing the diversity of Waco by integrating repetitions of the phrase "Welcome to Waco" that would be submitted by community members in their languages of origin. And the piece would, the design would be created by a local artist who would take all of those phrases and make a cohesive design. And we're hoping that this piece would be able to incorporate the natural light in the space. You can see a few concepts here of what this work could potentially look like. It has a budget of $12,000, and there are actually three locations there that this could cover. And the dimensions are listed there on this slide. The Waco backdrop would be located in the main lobby of the building, and the goal of this particular piece is to create high-impact and fun artwork that invites social media interaction. And we want it to be a first impression that would be created on arrival to Waco and the last thing that someone might see when they're leaving. And it would be the iconic "I'm in Waco" place to take a photograph or to create a memory. And here are a few concepts of what that space may look like. It could be a three-dimensional piece attached to the wall. It could be something that is completely three-dimensional that people could walk around. The budget is $25,000, and the dimensions of the space are 22 feet 6 inches by 8 feet 6 inches. As far as a timeline proposed for the project, a contract between Creative Waco and the City of Waco is scheduled for City Council consideration for November 2. The public art RFP should open in early November. Public art proposals would then be evaluated mid-December through January of 2022. And then the selection would be presented to the Aviation Advisory Board for their recommendation to Council in late January of 2022. And then those recommendations would be presented to City Council for final approval in February of 2022, which is also when airport construction is scheduled to begin. And then the public art could begin to be installed during construction as early as summer 2022. So I will pass it over to Hoel for the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. One of the last pieces that we have to talk about as far as the terminal building reno is the children's interactive play area. And one of the goals was to create an engaging aviation-centric or theme space for children to exert energy, reduce stress, and regulate their senses as they prepare for travel. And so we were fortunate enough to engage with Baylor, their interior design and engineering schools, as well as TSTC and L3 to kind of support this process, not only through kind of mentoring those students, but also in fabricating and installing this. So we're just preparing, the project itself that we're undertaking will prepare the white space, or white block space, and they'll come in and actually install the children's interactive area. And they have provided some really neat graphics for you all to look at here on this next slide there. So their, their idea, again, from the students that they have, have put together kind of a mock-up of a, of a, I guess, a cabin of an airplane. They're going to have foam seats inside there for kids to climb in and out of. There are also, I guess, the blue rocketship looking thing is going to be an area where students or children can get in that are maybe sensitive to noise and kind of give them a quiet space to kind of sit in. And then we also, they also incorporated a space for parents to sit kind of on the outside of that play space and kind of observe from the outside. You can see that bench or that high cocktail-type bench there or bar there for them to sit on. And so, again, it's a very exciting opportunity to engage with those groups as well. And then last but not least, we have that, you know, we quickly discussed the baggage claim LED lighting, just to add that warmth and color into the terminal building. And again, it's something that we can, it could be programmed, much like the LED lighting for the suspension bridge, the I-35 access road, we can do. So for special, special events, features, things of that nature, it'll give us the opportunity to kind of incorporate some of those, some of those features into the terminal building. So our updated schedule, initially, we had an extremely aggressive schedule when we started this process, based on the availability of materials. You can see where we've incorporated some of that. So we anticipate that the finalization of the restaurant design will be completed within the next few weeks. Then, as we, we're currently preparing the bid packages to go out, and we intend to open those and bring those to City Council in January of 2022. And we're hopeful to start construction in February. Our issued a notice to proceed for February, and again, depending on materials availability, that's why we kind of have a bigger window for performance on a nine-to-12-month window. So we're hopeful that by February of 2023, that we'll have a really nice facility to welcome RPS and travelers into Waco.
Any questions for Hoel?
Just, Holmes over here, just right quick. The four major, like, art projects, those are included in the funding from the federal funding, is that right? Are those over and above? I'm trying to remember.
Those are going to be funded from cash reserves, so they are ineligible for federal funding, but we can use airport cash reserves for that.
Great. I like the way you said it, Hoel, initially, sterile. It is kind of, when you come into the Waco Airport, you don't really get a lot of feel for it. And I've been on the road the last couple of weeks and in and out of airports, and just the ones where you get in there and you kind of know where you're at and you get a feel, even if you're away from it, makes you feel like you're in a familiar place. So I think, you know, branding this a little bit with the four projects that you've talked about, I think is going to make it something that we can be proud of here in Waco, and also that will draw folks in from other areas. I know that when, a lot of us that fly, when we go up to Dallas, the favorite, the favorite terminal go out of is D, because it's got so much cool stuff over there. A, B, and C are kind of, they're sterile, you know? So I think we can get ahead of DFW in some ways. But anyway, good, good project. I think a realistic timeline and really looking forward to how this looks. And I appreciate everybody's work on getting this tracked.
This is awesome. I think I'm really excited to see the direction this is going. When this came before council earlier this year, I think there was a little bit of reticence of, does this really capture who we are as a city, what we want to communicate? And this feels beautiful. It feels modern. It feels contextual to who we are as Waco. So thank you, Hoel. Thank you, Fiona. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Arthur, for everyone that's been a part of this. I'm really excited to see this come to life. The restaurant renderings. The restaurant renderings look fantastic. I love that signage being reflective of a flight board. That was a really fun detail. I know we had discussed at one point in our smaller working group, the potential of having the restaurant be indoor and outdoor. Is that something that's still on the table at this point?
It is on the table for future, just not part of this project. And it's kind of why that live wall is there to kind of, you know, just really liven up the place and not just look at a smoking lounge out there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, that totally makes sense. Like Holmes was saying, we're starting to fly again and my husband and I flew through Waco Regional last week and we saw Waco celebrities, the Living Stones there. So know that if you fly through Waco Regional, you might run into some famous Wacoans.
Yeah, just adding my voice to the chorus of praise. Wonderful work. It's a great partnership between our city and Creative Waco. Appreciate seeing all the, the good ideas for local artists jumping in. It, you know, brings a smile to all of our faces to see the elephant waiting there on the bench along the park. And so we know that our capacity for public art and utilizing local artists is great. And so looking forward to seeing the way this develops and is constructed. And I think it's a great use of the, the funding that we receive from the federal government. So thank you all.
We appreciate everything you all have done, Hoel, Fiona, Amanda, our commission and committees and the working groups that function with this. Y'all know, bless your heart, because I send the pictures from the airport. Look, see that? But what we do want this, our Waco Regional Airport, to be the welcome mat for our visitors and for the people who are coming into city. It is a impressive first impression at the, what I have seen in the renderings. I am glad that there is a base with the clean lines and the wood grain. I am also glad to know that the public art will bring in the color. It has to have a feel. And I mean, and I know I'm the eight crayola box, you know, champion, but I think that, that color brings about emotion and it triggers, and each color has a meaning. And I think that we have an opportunity to be, you know, modern and clean lines, but still encourage people to feel. And I hope that our, our, our public art, which we do well, will be reflective in the color of our community and the warmth of our city and really get people to understand who and where they have arrived to. So I'm really excited about this. I mean, I know that it's been a long time coming. God bless. But we are finally getting to a point that this is happening and the timeline is good. The usage of funds that we're using being reflective of what we have available with our federal aid, moving to the reserves that, you know, we have, we have been good stewards over and allow this type of resurgence and revitalization in our airport. So I look forward to seeing the new ideas and the restaurant, because at five in the morning, I need coffee. And so I think that'd be a great idea to have an option for coffee at five in the morning.
Again, I just appreciate this presentation so much and the direction we're going. We have a staff who I think listens to this council. We've been saying this for years that we, we want this. And so thank you to our staff who takes the bold steps to move us forward and to this council for weighing in and helping and sitting in meetings and contributing. So thank you to, to my co-council members for their hard work on this too. I think that for us to have a growing economy, we have to optimize our airport and that includes the critical infrastructure work that you're doing, Hoel. That includes the carrier grants that we're going to keep applying for, but that includes updating our terminal too. So this is a real strategic step towards making Waco's economy and quality of life, I think, more vibrant. I love the play space for kids. As a kid of, as a parent to tornadoes who need a contained space, I loved that, that idea. As, as Councilmember Palmer so correctly stated, this is a, this connects to us. I think that this is, my admonishment would be just to continue to make sure that it connects to the culture and history of who we are as you're filtering through this. An example of that might be like that space or the, the rocket for the kids' place, maybe put a SpaceX logo on there and have a little plaque next to it that says, "Did you know SpaceX has a facility and employs this number of people and develops this type of rockets here in Waco?" But really be thinking through the lens of how does this connect to the culture and history of all Wacoans as we go forward? And I think that this, the rubric that you've created and the trap, the, where we're headed so excellently does that. So just, just a continued encouragement that I hear that that's where we're going in this presentation and just, just keep running down that road. Another idea I have on the restaurant is to see, I don't know how to be staffed and I don't know if, you know, I, I don't know the demand and don't frankly don't know the restaurant business enough to know what that could look like, but incorporating local restaurants into serving that space. So maybe it's, you know, you don't have an employee of a restaurant there, you know, when you go to restaurants like Austin's, they have local Austin restaurants like lining the terminal and their demand is different. So they can justify from a business perspective staffing that up and having people there. For us, maybe it is having, you know, Harvest, Harvest on 25th, Pastry's and Lalo's Coffee and XYZ, other, all the other local restaurants that, you know, fill up the space with their goods. I don't know if that's possible or not. I don't know if there's a business model for that to work, but that was just an idea that I had.
Absolutely, yes. We're going to, as we work through that process, we're going to develop an RFP to, to fully address all those issues and those needs, because we want full service. We want coffee, you know, first thing in the morning. You know, we want to provide that for our folks, but we also want, you know, dinner or light fare later in the afternoon. So we're going to have to be creative, but I'm sure we can put something together and attract local fare. Because I, that, that's kind of been an ambition also is to bring that into the restaurant space there.
Great.
The only other question I have is, is, you know, there are static pieces in the public art, you know, that are particular for those areas. Is there any, is there any opportunity or any space for, you know, something that would be rotating specifically for our local artists?
We have at some point, I know, I know at some point in the history that I've been here, we have discussed actually having like an art display, like kind of just a stanchion to board an off area. So those spaces would definitely be available.
A pop-up gallery.
That's it, yes, exactly. A pocket gallery. But, you know, I'll let Fiona jump in there.
I wasn't sure if you meant an actual work of art that rotates or rotating artwork.
I mean, I'm always good for 360 spin, but no, I mean.
Because both are possible.
Right?
I mean, certainly in terms of, and these are the pieces that are actually part of the, will end up being part of the architecture. After that, you know, it's wide open in terms of how we use that space to communicate further about our community. But for these particular artworks, I think there is definitely scope for kinetic pieces to be part of the pitches, so the actual moving, rotating sculptures, as long as they're safe, of course.
Sure.
But, you know, that's a, I think that's a conversation for further down the line in terms of whether there is capacity in the space to have changing exhibitions and to showcase other work that is done by our community and outside the airport as well. There's a ton of opportunity there as well.
Do we have an idea, when we say we want local artists, does local mean Waco? Does local mean heart of Texas? Does local mean American?
Generally, for us, it generally means McLennan County.
Okay.
So it means people who are, who would see this as being the airport that they would fly out of and have a, you know, an intrinsic relationship with this particular location. I mean, we're, we try not to define that too tightly because people have various different stories that bring them into being a local artist. But, but it generally means that they live and work and have a, an identity that pivots in this location.
Any other questions? Thank you, team. Appreciate you guys so much. Excited about where this is headed. All right, we have one more presentation, so we could do a break, but I guess we're going to keep going if everyone's feeling up to it. We good? All right, last, last presentation is a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act.
All right. Our Director of Office of Management and Budget is joining us, Nick Sarfi, for this presentation. It's work session 755, Discussion of the American Rescue Plan. And I'm excited to, to kind of put a little meat on the bone in terms of going from our buckets that the council's previously heard about to a little more detailed allocations within those buckets. And Nick's going to cover that as well as some other matters related to ARP. Nick, take it away.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley mentioned, I'm here to go over the funding plan. So before we get started, we just wanted to go give you a little background of where we started and what the act encompasses. So the act has four eligible uses, just as a refresher for you. The first one is responding to the public health emergency and its negative economic impacts, providing premium pay to eligible workers, providing government services, which is commonly referred to as revenue loss, and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And then the act also has two prohibitions against usages of the fund that relate to the city, which is deposits into pension funds and then using the funds where other federal regulations prevent the use of federal funds as the non-federal match. So when we first started, we broke out the funding into three separate buckets. The first bucket, which was for municipal purposes, which is $15 million, includes infrastructure improvements and resiliency work, as well as potential revenue recovery aspects. The second bucket, which was the $17 million bucket, which was the subject of our budget simulation tool and citizen feedback and engagement, was for assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits. And that's kind of the focus of the funding plan information that we're going to go over, but will encompass the other two buckets as well. And then the final bucket is the contingency, which just provides us with some flexibility. So the first bucket, the municipal purposes, we've allocated, we've allocated up to this point $10 million for utility generators for water and WMARS. And on each of these slides, you'll see the eligible category use, which corresponds to the second slide where we have the numbers listed next to the four categories. So that's what that category four means. So it's for water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure. We have $1.1 million, sorry, allocated to the community center residency, which is generators for various community centers. We have $3 million allocated to the MHMR crisis hub and then $400,000 for a public broadband effort. And then lastly, $600,000 for the Health District to respond to the pandemic as needed over the next several years. So this slide is assistance to households, small business, and nonprofits totaling $17 million. On this slide, you'll see a comparison between what we're proposing the funding to look like, as well as what we received as far as feedback goes from our simulation tool. You'll notice that our funding, although not exactly one-to-one, is in line with their recommendations as far as the funding percentages. And I also want to say, I appreciate everybody that filled out the submissions and submitted them. We had received 331 submissions on the tool, which was a great first start in our citizen engagement process.
What, can you define housing bridge for me?
So we define it as for those people who, and when we did the simulation, that don't qualify for other federal programs. So they're in that gap between like what would qualify for like CDBG programs and people who may, who already can afford a housing, but they're just, they're on that edge. So that's kind of the group that we, when we did the simulation tool, that's what we defined that as.
And floodplain assistance?
That's dedicated to assistance to households and things and within the floodplain, to provide safe and healthy homes.
So it's not infrastructure remediate flood concerns, public infrastructure remediate flood concerns, it's to help individual households? Is that fair?
That's kind of what we, when we did the simulation, that's what we did.
Good.
But it could be both to ensure that they have that safe and healthy home.
Good, good.
Is the thought on that, sorry, just following up on the mayor's comments, is the thought on that, that we have a new floodplain map and that there are more homes now in that floodplain? And so they need assistance or are these just?
I think that was the original reason, one of the reasons we included that is our floodplain did, did expand from what it originally was before, if you might update their maps.
Okay, thank you.
Is it solely residences? I don't think so. It's, it's residences and commercial areas, correct?
We do intend to have it available for both. That's correct.
And I mean, what I would say on, on the questions, as we dive deeper into these conversations like geography and what's a bridge and who's it going to affect, we're not to the point where we can say exactly precisely what the programs are. We're trying to, we're trying to narrow to that point and see how you feel about these amounts. Of course, we can answer your questions, but I, I just don't want you or the, or the public to feel like we're dodging with, with, with the lack of specificity, because it's not there yet.
Buckets to cups, cups to sips.
There you go. I like that. I can use that later. We'll make a slide at the end and start.
All right. And this bucket also includes 2.5 million for Waco Family Medicine and their expansion. So bucket three was the 2.7 million for contingency and flexibility for the city as we go over the period of performance for the, the funding, which is through 2024. And then just some wrap-up, we are working with BKD to ensure compliance with the grant rules as we go through the process. And you'll see a contract come before you in the near future for approval and to formalize that agreement. As Bradley mentioned, the allocation categories that are in the plan are broad in nature on purpose so that we can specify them in the future and bring those back to council and communicate with you throughout the entire process as we go about using and spending the funds. And all this, all the usage will be consistent with any studies and plans that the city has done or is doing. And then lastly, Councilmember Holmes, this was your question last week. I apologize for not addressing it. The funding is separated into a separate account. So we have a separate account just for the American Rescue Plan funding. All right, with that, any questions?
Nick, thanks for your presentation. Quick question for the contingency funds. So is that contingency just for ARP-specific funded projects?
Yeah, so it's for, it's the city's contingency for the American Rescue Plan usage. So if something were to happen, we have available funding to respond accordingly.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just chime in here just a little bit. The, if you look at like the, the two pages that we're concentrating on, 42 and 43, I mean, this is meat and potato stuff. I mean, these are generators that we need. So it's not like we've got, you know, some, some ethereal thing that we're trying to complete. This is stuff that we need addressing the, the need, the outline of what the ARP program is for. So I like to see that because otherwise that would be eventually coming out of the general fund. So I see that as long-term savings to the, to the taxpayer's share. The MHMR crisis hub, I think that's great. And the county's also committed $3 million there, so that's, I think, a great initiative. Then going to the next page on the, the housing, really it's two or three of the categories addressed, housing, down payment, rehabilitation, affordability. That's such a timely issue that we're all struggling with right now and how we, how we deploy those funds. And two of the other ones that maybe get kind of under the, under the wire here are the, the small business, which I'm a big preponderer of. I know last summer, we, we stood up a, a program that I think had a degree of success. And I think re-engaging that process with the micro businesses here in Waco with that, that $2 million to kind of get it kick-started, I think is, is money well spent. And then another one is it's the job training. I think it's very important, upskilling, job training. There's a lot of jobs coming to Waco now and I think we've tried to get the economic growth here in Waco that involves getting better and higher-paying jobs. And I, I think that's, this one also is money well spent and very timely that just core job training and upskilling and, and getting folks into the, these new and, and better jobs hopefully that, that we're trying to attract to Waco. I think it's, all this is going in the right direction. Thanks.
Nick, I appreciate your presentation as always and I want to just share that I'm really excited about how, how our city is addressing these dollars in our community in that found money is very different than earned money, right? And we have an opportunity to make some great impacts, one time, you know, large-scale impacts with these dollars. with these dollars that, you know, we didn't have to, 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 to find a way how to figure that out in our general fund budget. This is what I have been in discussion with cities all over the country is this is a great opportunity for us to make those kind of, of standalone either purchases or, you know, things that, that won't, won't cost our taxpayers those kinds of dollars. But these are the ones that have to stand up with minimal sustainability because that money, once it's spent, goes away. So I appreciate what, what staff has committed and what our community has voiced and what they wanted to see done with this money. This is another opportunity to work alongside our strategic goals as a council in issues of equity and issues of, of community fortification and how we grow Waco. But, you know, it's the big one, you know, the big one-time projects that may or may not have, you know, been, oh yeah, we can get to it, but we have to figure out a way how. These are the way we, because we've been talking about public broadband. I got here and got back in 15 and we started talking about that then, I think. And, you know, these are the things and we realize how important that those things are and, and got a, a hard look at what that felt like at the beginning of, of the pandemic. So, you know, that, you know, as council member Holmes said with the revolving loan pro, the small business loan and grant program, you know, those are the things that helped our community grow and helped us thrive and be able to, to remain solvent through the times of crisis. So how we feed into and, and pour into the programs that are there, because it's pouring into the communities, it's pouring into the people that are, that we represent and that make Waco Waco. We will say that the floodplain assistance is a big deal. So I'm glad to see it's in the bucket. I'm glad to see that we will be working towards some sort of solution for something that, you know, was unforeseen in our community. So I'm really excited about this from, from the artist to the small businesses to the infrastructure because Yuri showed us where some of our shortfalls were and now we have an answer to those things. And it is done in a manner that, that, that won't, we didn't have to, to figure out how to adjust our general fund dollars to do. So I appreciate all this work and insight and I'm, I'm looking forward to what the next question slide will be. I mean, no, no, no. So we've had this one a couple of times and I know you'll, because, so, so you're going to be a regular feature here at council, Nick. So we're just going to have to keep it fresh, sir. But we appreciate you.
Yeah, I probably don't have too much to add to what's already been said. I appreciate the priority, the responsiveness to our citizen input here and we can see the need for affordable housing and, and that's laid out pretty well through this, these various programming. I think the match for both the MHMR crisis hub and the Waco Family Medicine expansion, this is great use of those funds. I think that these are foundational kind of public health institutions in our community. And I appreciate not only our partnership with the county in putting up this kind of money for these big capital programs, but, but also the good that this money will do for those. And I, I too echo the appreciation of kind of the long view. I think in a, in a world where we're going to see more and more, you know, 100-year, 500-year weather events become normative, I think learning from that storm and investing in the backup generators, not only for our water supply, but also for the potential for the need for community warming centers going forward is just prudent, wise, long-term thinking. So I appreciate the way that we are spending these federal dollars here, or at least in these categories. And I think it shows good, wise city leadership and I appreciate my fellow council members in working towards these good goals.
Any other comments? I, I agree that this is an incredibly unique opportunity for us to achieve really robust goals that this council has. When I look across our city, two of our greatest needs right now is housing and workforce. We see it for every neighborhood in this community, rising housing costs. We see the demand at play. So our strategic implementation of these goals, particularly, I think, in the core, to see revitalization is smart because it helps people first and foremost. Second, it secures our tax base. It is good fiscal responsibility for this council to ensure that the core of the city has a strong viable future. And then the workforce issue, we hear it from business after business, the demands, and we know that we've worked so hard with our business development partners to bring in jobs that pay good wages to this community so we can build up a middle class. We've worked so hard for that. And we hear businesses already saying, well, there's kind of a workforce shortage now. And so ensuring that we are implementing good workforce development programs, both with the essential skills and the technical skills for those jobs, I think is really going to accomplish this council's goal of building an economy that works for everybody. And I think the small business support plays right into that too. So really excited to see where this goes, really excited about how we move forward together on this and thankful to the team for working to collect public input as well as implement these council goals as we move forward. Excited for the future on this one. So thank you, Nick. Any other questions or comments? Great. Are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, we will recess into executive session, recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by our city secretary at 4:36 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, contract for transfer lift station and force main project, packages one through three, gravity and siphon, lift station and force main. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in an executive session at 4:37 PM.